Committee of the Moscow City Council. My name is Tom Lamar. And with me, we have Wayne Kraus and John Weber. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the March 10th minutes.
And almost, I think they're fine, John?
I agree, Will, and I was not here on that date, so I will just assume that they are correct.
They are.
Thank you. The second item on the agenda is the 2014 Moscow Mardi Gras Grant Acceptance Request with Eric Newell.
Yes, what you said.
Exactly. I see you're not a LISA, so I think you're just...
Excuse me. We came before you earlier this month requesting the opportunity to apply for the grant. You gave us the blessing. We did receive a $1,000 grant from Moscow Mardi Gras, and we would like to accept it and use it for your scholarships.
Yay!
May we?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. I think we all agree with you.
Yeah, only question I've got is the grant going towards you scholarships. Is that for just local, or will it be applied to county?
I will reach out to Moscow Mardi Gras to make sure.
Yeah, see how they want to handle that.
I'll ask them how they want to handle it.
Because I know they've got a lot of people from the county that come into Mardi Gras, too.
I think the private monies, you know, we've...
I'll just reach out to make sure.
Probably, yeah, I'm sure it's probably... That'd be nice. Thank you so much.
Good.
Thank you. Congratulations. And we will, once we have somebody that can put it on the consent agenda, we will...
Have it put on the consent agenda.
Don, Don, Don.
Do you want to be acting? I think Wayne is asking you to do something.
I'm going to be Gary.
Would you mind being Gary?
I think, I think, I'm pretty sure that Stephanie heard us say that. Number three, the third item on the agenda is the Moscow Public Library Public Art Project.
Consent agenda.
That's funny, "public" in both places, for both reasons, both the public library's name and the public art project with Kathleen Burns.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
So, just to give you an update on the library project, the new entrance was finished and completed, and the first estimate of the project was, since it was a $150,000 project, that it generated $1,500 in 1%. So, I just checked in with Don, and he said, yeah, Don.
So, to translate what you just said, since the project was $15,000 of our funds, it generates $1,500 or...
$150,000.
$150,000, $1,500 of 1% towards public art dollars.
Correct.
Just making sure that's understandable to people that are watching.
Yes, that's very good. So, when we met the Moscow Arts Commission and the public art subset of MAC, we looked at the importance of the library as a space for public art, and that even though it generated only $1,500, that we might want to look at a project that is larger than that and go into the balance of the budget, which is at $69,000, and draw from that budget to create a larger project for the library. And what we looked at was, when we did the citizen survey in 2012, the number one place for placing public art by our citizens was the library, 30%. Second to that was city parks and trails. So, with that, we met, and sheedles here, we met with the library and then the Subcommittee of MAC and formalized a letter from Donna Woolston and Iris Mays, and that was included in your packet to recommend going forward with a project. So Elizabeth Graff and I went to the library and kind of took some pictures as possible locations for a public art. So I put these photos up for you to look at. We looked at the book drop, and that has since been changed to a new book drop. This is a new friend's garden of the library that's being installed, and that is a possible site potential. Then with this new installation of concrete and railings and cement, there's different locations that could be a site for public art, and the wall behind the planning boxes, the vertical space in the alcove there by the window, and then some other spaces in the planning areas, and then also central to the plaza. So, what I'm here for today is to just request that you look up the backup that I included in the packet and recommend approval and authorization to extract more fund money to do a project at the library. John?
I'm fairly sure I agree with that. At this point, before you have done anything else, you're coming to us so you have a better idea of the amount that you have available?
No, I know what we have available in the fund.
No, but I mean the amount that you have available to use.
Right.
Okay.
Before we do a call for artists and we do this, continue with the site analysis and ask the public what they think, and it's going to be quite a long process, but initially I want to request that we be allowed to expend that money in addition to the initial $1,500.
Okay. So we'd be looking for a total naturally of your $15,000. All right.
Somewhere in there.
Kathleen, looking through the material that we've got, it's not totally clear to me. There's some discussion about $12,000 to $14,000 for some kind of sculpture work, maybe around the, like, book drop or something. How did you come up with the $15,000? It seems like it's kind of an arbitrary number.
Well, we kind of looked at what it costs to put the whole sculpture garden and the infrastructure at the transit center.
See that.
Which was new last year. And all the infrastructure for the transit center with the columnar basalt and the plinths and the Corten steel, the landscaping, irrigation, that whole project was about $15,000 to create that area. And then we just have installations of student work, which is no cost. But to do a fixed piece, you know, just discussing with the Public Art Subcommittee of MAC, we just came up with a ballpark figure. And we thought we needed a ballpark figure before we went through a process of asking the public what they would like to see and so we can kind of look at a set aside versus going too big. Yeah.
Well, I think $15,000 is a reasonable figure.
Yeah.
You know.
It's not too extravagant.
And it sounds like they're going to lean more towards a multiple-piece type artwork as opposed to one structure.
It's hard to say. You know, by the time we put a packet together and work with the library to do storyboards and work with the public on what they want to see, and it's hard to say. But I'm here to just request that you approve using some balance money.
More money.
Yeah, I'm good for it.
Because the project just didn't generate enough.
I'm not good for it, I'm good with it.
Thanks. Thanks, Wayne. We appreciate that donation. Well, Kathleen, I served on the Public Arts Committee last year, two years ago, whenever that was. And I think that this is a reasonable amount of money to put forward, and I like that we're, you know, using the funds that we had from the construction plus augmenting that from the, some of the current balance and the...
And we'll be going through the public art guidelines process where we'll form a selection committee and...
And that was a process that we approved, what, two years ago or three years ago? I can't remember when it was.
Three years, yeah.
Don?
The project that actually went over the $150,000, and so I had Sue calculate the F-Way. Sorry about that. I had Sue Nelson, my county manager, calculate what the 2013 contribution was to 1%, and it came to $1,766. And then that project carried over into this year as well, and there'll be an additional $579 at the close of the '14 year towards, from that project alone. So that'll come to $2,345, which is 845 more than what's been reported here, just so it'll help out with that project.
That's our update.
So, does that mean that you're looking for a total max of $15,000 so we can reduce this 13.5 by the amount of money that Don's saying? Oh, well, that's great.
Yep.
That helps.
That's pretty good.
I think this committee is good with the $15,000.
You'd want that on regular agenda?
Consent, I think.
Yeah, I think consent's fine.
Okay.
Okay, great. So do you want me to sit down and come back up?
Yeah.
I want to. No, stay right there.
Take a lap around the building.
Run around and stand up, sit down, find the left-handed smug shifter, and then come back. Okay, so item number four on the agenda is the Moscow School District Community Playfields Public Art Project. I'll get, again, with Kathleen.
So here's another project that we're going to go into with the city and the school district, and we will not necessarily, according to Don and Bill, we won't be generating 1% from that ball fields project. Even though it's a park, it's a ball field, it's because it is the school district and we're in an agreement and facility use agreement. So, it is a very big public space, though, that will have a lot of traffic. And in discussions with the MAC, they'd like to look at a future possible project there. And so that would also be expending monies out of the balance of our fund.
So, we are, can you explain one piece, which is that we're spending $1.5 million? How would that not generate 1% for the art, given our policy? Could you explain that piece?
Sure. This is considered a contribution from the Hamilton Fund to the school district, and the city won't have ownership of that. We have a lease to use. So that's the differentiation between our project and the community ball fields project. It doesn't mean to say that we can't change that, you know, and our 1% would be $15,000, and there'd be, you know, matching that because they're matching 1.5 as well. Maybe I can have Gary look into that.
So, I guess what I'm trying to ask is, is it because we don't own the final result of the project at our 1, our $15,000, or $1.5 million contribution? Or is it because we are giving them the money and they're doing it and we're not constructing it? Or what are you saying?
We will not own the, we have, we're purchasing a right to use, okay? And it's a contractual obligation, I think it was over 20, 30 years? And so, we will not own that, we won't have it on our fixed assets, which the ordinance, the ordinance says it would be a city-owned project. So that's the difference.
I understand Tom's question, but I think, I think it goes further than that. I can understand where we're just donating the one and a half million to the school district to partner in this, but the project is a $3 million project.
Correct.
And so I think the question really is, why is 1% not being generated from $3 million? And I think the answer to that is because it's a government agency. Is that correct?
No, because it's a government agi... You mean as far as Moscow School District?
Yeah.
Yeah. Our ordinance is for our city. I'm not sure that pertains to other governments, which would include the Moscow School District.
Correct. It's just the 1% ordinance that we have is for our city properties, our city buildings, our city parks. It doesn't, the 1% doesn't pertain to the school district jurisdiction. That's different. And it's kind of like the federal properties that we have in town or church and state. It doesn't apply.
That's what I thought.
John? Well, I think another thing that we should consider on this is that if we were to take $30,015 from the budget that the school district is going to provide and 15 from the budget that the city is going to provide, we're going to take away $30,000 from the project itself.
Correct.
Instead of making it, if the, if this was a project that was going to be bid on by so-and-so's construction outfit, and we told them at the beginning that they were going to need to put a 1% amount aside for public art, it would change the bidding process. From what I understand, in the bidding process, what we're going to have, they are still, the committee, the city and the school district are still trying to figure out how to get the most they can out of the $3 million. And if we take $30,000 away for public art or for anything else, there's $30,000 less that there will be available for paving, for parking lots, for dugouts, for any number of things. And since that's what we're trying to facilitate, is the most we can get for the, for the kids of the community, then I, in this case, would be in favor of essentially discounting that.
I kind of understood it a different way, John. I didn't understand it, that they wanted to take money out of the construction funds. I understood it that this was money that they wanted to take out of the art fund that's already there, the $69,000 minus $15,000.
Correct. Because the project, the ball field project, is not applicable to the 1%.
I understand it. John's saying he thought the money was going to come out of the 1.5. It's not. That's additional money on top of that.
That's correct.
I, Frank, I'll just make my opinion right now. I think we're way premature on this. I'm not, I'm not, I would vote no if I had to vote right now. I'd just like to take a wait and see. Let's get these ball fields built. Let's get everything done. There's no big critical issue right now on putting artwork up in a ball field that we don't even have constructed yet. So, I'd like, I'd just table this thing until we get the ball fields done, then see where we're at.
My understanding, too, wasn't Bill Belknap, yeah, working with the Design Committee and going out for bid later this month, or late, maybe April, I thought it was.
Do you know Jen? April 1?
Right.
And so there was a lot of ad alternates that they were going to wait and see, so I think that's what they were looking at, seeing where we're going to be with the $3 million.
So, the point of the agenda item was just to bring it to your attention that this project is a very large project, but the 1% ordinance does not apply.
Understand that.
That's all.
So my question for you with this is that you're not asking for a specific amount of money?
No.
In this, you're just saying, in general, the concept is that you would like to request that we go to the same fund?
Correct.
To use for this thing. And I'm fine with that question. I don't think you're asking for a specific thing yet. I think that...
I'm just informing you.
I like, I support that concept of you going and using this fund for that thing and start thinking about what needs to happen for that. So that, I think, makes sense.
I have an issue with the verbiage for the action, which is recommend approval of locating a public art installation at the Moscow School District Community Playfields.
Well, that's...
I don't have any problem with MAC looking into this thing and talking to the school district. I don't, I don't have enough information here at all for me to say, yeah, rock and roll, go ahead and do it, you have my blessing. I want to see a lot more information before I say yes.
Okay.
That might be it.
So...
Why don't we just change the, just change the language of what we're recommending? Just take out the word installation. Recommend approval of locating public art at the Moscow School District Community Playfields and funding such project from public art balance. Take out the word installation, and we are approaching what Wayne likes, and we're still approaching the thought of using the money that we already have.
Well, I think that what Wayne's saying, I mean, we can't, we can't approve locating a public art installation. It's not our property, right? So it's, the only people that can do this, approving the locating of the public art is the, is the school board.
Right.
So that's the wrong question to ask us. I think the right question to ask us is to...
I would say that if you wanted us to recommend, we would recommend that the Moscow Art Commission pursue the idea of a partnership with the school district on a public art project at the ball fields.
Okay.
That I could go along with.
I would recommend pulling this from the council and moving this forward to a future Public Works Committee meeting with that change.
Okay.
And then she can research, you know, with the school district what they would like to do. That'd be my recommendation.
What do you think, Tom?
I think that makes sense. We're trying to, I mean, the idea is we're, we're trying to do a few different things at the same time. And I think that the concept of using that fund, I think, is okay with this committee. It's just, maybe we need to figure out if that's even going to be desired at that spot.
Yeah, I just, I just can't get the feeling that the cart's way up there ahead of the horse right now.
There's going to be some giant baseball bat and balls sitting there, and that's going to be the...
No.
Okay, great.
All right. Thanks, Kathleen.
Thank you, Kathleen.
You're welcome.
The fifth item on the agenda is the Paradise Path Task Force Revised Mission Statement with Tom Grundon. And I think we've got some Paradise Path Task Force members that would like to join Tom at the table, or join him at the window, or something. Something's happening.
Don't jump it.
At the lectern. Come on. Oh, good, we'll get a slideshow. You want to sit here? Okay, great. So let's get another chair, because I think we've got... We have, in addition to Tom Grundon, we have Karen Clifford and Margaret Dibble from the Paradise Path Task Force.
Thank you.
Karen, Margaret, thank you for being here. Karen with an I, K-A-R-I-N.
The Paradise Path Task Force, since I arrived here at the city about 2010, late summer, has been working on the maintenance and care, caretaking of the path and all its amenities and so forth. And it's become apparent over the last, I want to say, two to three years, and you guys jump in when you're ready or want to, the path, the task force for the path has come to the realization that the linear focus of the Paradise Path Task Force has not ended, but with the task, with the path being laid out where it is now and the current amenities associated with it, the task force decided and has discussed a number of times over the past couple of years of further enhancing a cycling system, pedestrian system throughout the city as opposed to just a linear portion of the two miles that run through town. And that makes a long story shorter. This is a map that a student group put together with Professor Lawrie a couple of years ago, just showing portions of the current path and some other existing pieces throughout the city. But the main reason I wanted to show this was that there's many other opportunities in the city, in adjoining the city, to increase transportation opportunities for cyclists, pedestrians, commuters, and whatnot. So this discussion's been kind of coming and going over the last few years, and it's come to the point now where the task force is fairly firm on wanting to change the focus of the mission somewhat. It's still the same transportation and recreation and conservation work, but with a focus that can we do other things besides just the linear portion of the task force? So these are just the models that are out there, but I want to give you a little background as to the genesis of why they thought the revised mission statement would be more appropriate. So, Margaret, do you have anything to add in? That makes...
No, that sounds good, so sorry.
So the proposal before you then is, there was, the original, when the task force was started in 1994, there was a mission statement aligned with the task force and what they were doing. And then in 2011, a temporary one was adopted but never officially brought forward to the city council for approval. And then since that one even, the task force has been working and discussing what's the best position for our mission statement. So that's what's before you today, and I'll open it up to Karen or Margaret.
Well, I can't remember when I joined the Paradise Path Task Force. It hasn't been a really long time, but I think...
Margaret, you want to be sure and talk into my microphone?
Okay, yeah, well, ever since, you know, I've been on the task force, we have been talking about a network of paths or a circuit of the city. I think very early with Roger Blanchard, we were looking at a big map that showed something like a big ring of paths around the city, and we talked about having a path within a quarter mile of everywhere in the city, someplace you could walk and bike. So, I've always understood it as to be more than a connector between the Chipman Trail and the Leita Trail.
And the task force has interacted with the Transportation Commission at times over some things the last couple of years, as well as the Mobility Task Force that was put together and so forth. So, they're always open and willing to discuss with other groups different enhancements for transportation for cyclists and pedestrians.
And what's before us today is the mission statement question. There are three choices here, the previous one from many years ago, and then the one that was looked at in 2011 or adopted by the committee in 2011. But then, what's now being presented to us is the one that says, draft tentatively adopted November 12, 2013, right?
That's correct, Tom.
And so that one, I'll just read it. Paradise Path Task Force promotes and advises on the development of a path system in and around Moscow embracing three important community concerns: active transportation, recreation, and resource conservation enhancement. I think it sounds good.
We, we like it.
Yeah, we like it.
It is what we do.
It seems like it grasps everything.
Yeah, just fine with me.
Yeah, it looks like you took the, I like the current statement. Looks like you took the one you had previously, and you kind of reworked a little bit, kind of condensed it down and broadened it with less verbiage. I think you did a good job on it. So, yeah, I like it. It's good. I think it'll be a good, good way to move forward for a good mission statement.
I think it sounds good. I, in fact, I would suggest we put it forward on the consent agenda.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, let's see, the last item, oops. The last item is actually, oh, no, we have a couple of reports. One is the van pool update with Jen Piftner, and then we're going to have another update.
Good afternoon.
Thanks, Jen.
Thanks. So I'm here to provide a quick report on the city of Moscow's van pool program. If you remember, this program was taken over by the city from PCEI in an effort to grow the program and try to make the most of the city resources that we had at that time. Originally, we started with one van, and that's a 2006 Chevy Savannah. It's a 15 passenger that is still on the road. It's approaching about 130,000 miles and is our oldest van in the fleet. In 2010, when the transition occurred, part of the reason for that was two new vans came online. And we have two minivans, a Dodge and a Toyota minivan that both seat six, and they're at about 50,000 miles at this point. So, the report today, just want to let folks know that we have two spots open on the van pool service right now. That accommodates an eight-to-five work schedule here in Moscow, leaves from Lewiston in the morning, drops people off at work by eight, picks everybody up at about five, and then heads back down the hill. With the aging fleet, at least one of our vehicles aging a little bit, we are looking at perhaps replacement options as we move into the next couple of years. So, on our obsolescence plan, that one comes up in this coming budget year. So we're working with ITD to identify any other opportunities that may be out there for van replacements and other agencies that may be cycling vans out that are still less mileage, later models than what we have now. But our goal is to promote the safety of the van pool. We don't want folks stranded on the side of the road at any time, but also make the most out of the assets that we have. So, a bit of a balancing act there, so. Fares for our van pool have been about $107 a month, and we've maintained that over several years, and we do a cost benefit or just a cost analysis on where we're at with the fares versus the operations expense for the vans, and have done well with that. So that's, that's kind of the nuts and bolts of it today. Not very exciting, but good news, anyway.
Oh, Don?
I just have a comment to add to Jen's report, is that to ensure continuity of the van pool, ever since its inception, we've been putting monies aside for replacement of vans as they come up with the proceeds from, we factor in replacement value with the fees that we collect.
Correct.
So, I didn't know that we'd had it that long, actually.
Yeah, it's had it for some time, which is good.
So anyway, I just want to make sure that you guys know that we have a sustainability program. program for replacement.
True, we are planning for that replacement.
Have to try to find, find the money somewhere to buy it.
No, it's, it's there.
No, we've thought of that along the way, so.
That's great.
Good enough.
When we first started the van pool, we, I remember purchasing blankets and first aid kits and cell phones that could be designated to the vehicle, so these plug-in bag phones that look like big-
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's, and I'm glad that we're-
We don't have the bag phones, but we still have the safety kits and the cones and the flares just in case.
You're dating yourself.
Yeah.
It's been a while. We did it a long time ago.
That's true.
Ninety-five when we started.
I was the first man, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's neat to see that happening. The last report that we have is the vinyl wrap art update with Kathleen. I guess I should have had you stay up here and do it.
It's okay.
She jogged around the building?
Yeah, she's back again.
I'm back again. This is pretty quick.
Some vinyl wrap.
It's only two slides. And so if you, these are the current installations that we started in 2013 and they were for Art Walk. So we're gearing up for Art Walk again June 13th. The one on Third and Washington, which is just kitty corner from here near Keeney Brothers, is by Catherine Clancy. Sixth and Washington, down by Sterling's Bank in the co-op, is Jennifer Rod. Third and Jackson is a photograph of On the Way Home to Troy. And that's actually by a, thanks, by a guy that works out in a wastewater treatment plant. That's his photograph. And then at Sixth and Jackson is Leanne Wappett. It's wheat and it's kind of in U of I colors because it's kind of near the entrance to U of I. So that's what was installed last year. And we used a print company down in Lewiston and then a local guy, Steve with Cutting Edge, did the installation. So this year, the Arts Commission looked at what other locations they'd like to do. And Third and Main is right there in front of Champions. Sixth and Main is actually one that the city owns and that's in front of Myelina, a pizza parlor. And then D and 95, which is down near the cross from Walgreens, near the new gas station, and then Line and Highway 8. So that's just an update. We're going to be going out and measuring the boxes. We've already been working with ITD and they're on the selection panel, the local guy.
Are these where we've got two boxes?
We're going to have to go out and format, so we-
Both?
Yep. Yep. That's what Coeur d'Alene does, so we're just going to follow suit.
What's the, what's the cost on those?
It's about $1,000 a box. After installation and materials.
John, how long do they last or do you know?
About five years. They're good for about five years.
Kathleen, do you have any themes? Has the committee thought of any themes that you'd like to shoot for?
No.
You just put it out there and let the artists-
Do you have a recommendation? Do you want to be on the selection committee?
The first one made me think of a beer bottle or something.
At this point, you should be quiet, Tom.
Maybe that one at Third and Main.
Champions would be-
Yeah, you'll be on another-
I'll be on another committee, I don't need that.
Who's our local sports figure that was?
Oh, which, well, we've had numerous local sports figures and now we have a whole-
A sports bar.
Basketball team of local sports figures.
So if you want to talk about thematic and being in front of a sports bar?
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. You have Dan O'Brien.
Dan O'Brien could be running.
Never know. Just putting the idea out there.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other bits to that report?
Nope.
Nope.
Keeping it simple.
Okay.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Do either of you have any other items for this committee?
I have nothing.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you.